Twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Donna.
That's all I got.
Okay, perfect. Good afternoon. My name's Alan Walther. I'm a partner with the Biden and Deo Group. We are the Dutchess Community College External Auditors. We've completed our audit for the year ended August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. All the reports have been filed and completed. I think we completed them back in April. They're due May thirty-first, so you met all of your applicable deadlines. So the scope of the services that we provide for the college, our primary focus is to audit the college's financial statements in accordance with government auditing standards. We'll talk about that a little bit. And in conjunction with that, we do a uniform guidance audit of your federal expenditures because the college expends in excess of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal aid. There's a uniform guidance audit included as well. Just a brief summary for the for the board. We issued an unmodified opinion that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with GAAP, GAAP being generally accepted accounting principles. That is the highest level of assurance that we can give on your financial statements. If you didn't read the entire audit report, read the management's discussion analysis. That gives a good summary of the fiscal year ended August thirty-first and provides information that may affect the college in the future. We did not have any internal control findings or compliance findings. And a big thank you to Donna and the rest of the staff for all their assistance in helping us get through the audit. An audit is a collaborative effort. We can't audit what you guys don't provide us. So thank you very much. One of the reports that we issued was a required communications letter. If you looked at that letter, I believe it's a three-page document. It's kind of can be looked at as a report card of important happenings in the audit and how the audit went. The big thing that happened in two thousand and twenty-two was that the college adopted GASB eighty-seven, which pertains to leases. GASB is a governmental accounting standards board. This lease standard applies to all governments. So we worked with Donna and the staff to obtain the information regarding leases and make sure that the college is in compliance with that. Significant estimates. You think of financial statements, you think of numbers as exact. It's not entirely true. There are some significant estimates that are in the financial statements, the most significant being compensated absences, which is just an estimate of how much the college owes to its employees for accumulated sick time. Depreciable lives of capital assets, estimates of how long your buildings and equipment will last. Other post-employment benefits obligation, which is a very large estimate. And that's calculated by an actuary. And what that represents is the college's estimated liability to its retirees and to its employees who are assumed to become retirees for post-employment benefits, primarily health insurance. And then finally, the net pension asset and liability and deferred outflows and inflows flows through from the college's participation in the New York State Retirement Plan. So our role as your auditors is to evaluate the estimates and consider if they're reasonable, and we did that, and we believe that they are reasonable in relation to the financial statement as a whole. No significant difficulties in performing the audit, no disagreements with management. We're not aware that management consulted with other accountants. And our discussions with management were in the normal course of our professional relationship. The financial highlights, the statement net position is the first financial statement of the of the college, which is on page ten. The highlights here, your current assets as of August thirty-first, thirty-two point two million dollars of cash receivables and pre-paged. Those are your current assets. Your non-current assets were eighty-nine point three million. That is capital assets, lease receivable, and pension asset. That includes this year approximately twenty million dollars of lease assets that were required to be recorded under GASB eighty-seven. Deferred outflows were twenty-eight million dollars. That those flow through from your from the pension plan and from OPEB. Your current liabilities were twelve and a half million dollars, which are accounts payable, accruals, and unearned revenue. That was a decrease of about two point two million dollars from the prior year, primarily due to the timing of of payments, cash flow. Your non-current assets, I'm sorry, your non-current liabilities were one hundred and forty-eight point three million dollars. And that's primarily comprised of compensated absences, leases, and other post-employment benefits, which increased about twenty-eight point three million dollars. But again, that was a twenty-one million dollars. So that was your lease liability. That was the first year this year that that you had to recognize the lease liability. Deferred inflows were seventeen point seven million, flows through from pension, other post-employment benefits, leases, and the TAP program. And then the accounting formula is assets plus deferred outflows minus liabilities minus deferred inflows brings you to your net position. The college has a net deficit of twenty-eight point nine million dollars, which is primarily the result of recognizing your other post-employment benefits, which is a very long-term liability of one hundred and twenty-three point nine million dollars. Just to put that into perspective, all of our community college clients, all of our school district clients, all of our government clients that have, you know, significant employees or payroll costs show a net deficit because of the fact that the the other post-employment benefits liability is recognized, and there are no offsetting assets against that. Your statement of activities, which is on page eleven, your net position for the year overall decreased two point nine million dollars. Some of the highlights for the year, your total operating revenue was nineteen and a half million dollars, which was a decrease of about five point three million dollars from the prior year, primarily due to some one-time COVID funding in two thousand and twenty-one. Your operating expenses for two thousand and twenty-two were seventy-nine point three million. Non-operating revenue was fifty-six million dollars. Other additions were nine hundred and seven thousand. And we issued the government audit auditing standards report, which is also known as the the Yellow Book Report with regard to internal controls and compliance. As I said previously, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls were noted, and no instances of non-compliance were noted. With regard to uniform guidance report, which is also known as the single audit, on page sixty of the report is your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. The college expended approximately twenty-three point six million dollars in total of federal awards, which includes COVID-nineteen HIRF funding, the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund of ten point nine million dollars, and student financial assistance of eleven point seven million dollars. The major program that we tested this year was the COVID-nineteen HIRF program. And as I had said previously, we gave an unmodified opinion on your compliance and no internal controls, no internal control issues. Okay? So overall results of the audit, very favorable, unmodified opinion on your financial statements, no internal control findings at the at the financial statement level or at the single audit level. We did issue a management letter. Our IT people did a review of your compliance with the Graham Leach Bliley Act, which pertains to safeguarding of sensitive data, and we met with Donna and the IT folks and discussed that in detail. There's been some improvements, but you're not a hundred percent of the way there with regards to risk assessments, vendor and management policies and procedures, and then risk related to malicious activities. That is the extent of my comments. I think I was told to keep it to fifteen minutes. I wasn't watching my clock, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any other specific questions?
No, no questions, Mr. Chairman. But again, Donna, I just underscore to you and the entire team how much we really appreciate your generosity here and making sure that we're really handling this place. So we very much appreciate that.
Just a question, either Mr. Walther or to Adam or Donna. Anyone like to explain why there are no assets attached to the OPEB, the other post-employment benefits? In other words, that we're not managing things by not trying to have assets against that hundred and thirty, whatever it is, million dollar benefit?
We're not allowed to.
Thank you. I want to make sure they understand. Everybody else understands this. In other words, we we are not allowed to set up any kind of sinking fund that would somehow help offset these benefits into the future that we don't really know about except through actual estimates because we're just not allowed to by the state.
It's exactly prohibited by New York State. Other states, the the GASB rules apply across the country. Other states do allow sinking funds or you know, it's similar to a pension plan where you wouldn't have, if you had an unfunded pension plan, you'd be very terrified.
The first time the GASB, I was on the board, the first time the GASB rule was promulgated, where we had to start recognizing it, and at the time, all the trustees were because it's a huge amount. It hadn't been acknowledged before. So it's been acknowledged ever since that this state in particular doesn't allow us to try to maintain anything that would somehow account for this to offset it. So I just wanted to make sure it was we have some newer members here, so I want to make sure they all understood that. You're welcome.
I think everyone has kind of become numb to it because it's been a decade or so, and the numbers are so big. But they're they're real. So anyway, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's a pleasure to hear the good news each time, each year.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation of the operating budget for our next fiscal year. VP Rathbun.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Time for some fun discussion. So proposed budget. Briefly, just go over the timeline, revenue side of things, expenses, and then just a brief summary at the end here. For the timeline, here we are in May, the presentation to the board. We do have some meetings set up with the county legislative. I believe the first one is the first week of June, meeting with the leadership team for the county. We're still working on some other meetings with the legislative side, but those should happen in early June as well. We will be presenting this budget to the the DCC or the Dutchess County Legislature on June eighth. And then mid-July, they'll go to approve their but the budget for us. We'll do a budget available to the community in the August timeframe, once it's approved by the county as well, and then we submit it to SUNY for approval. For the revenue side, talk about some assumptions. We'll have a proposed tuition increase. We'll get into that in a second. County sponsorship increase, about four percent is what we're requesting, and that's included in this proposal. And then state aid is flat for this fiscal year based on this current year's funding level. And that was approved in the state budget a couple of weeks ago. So for proposed tuition increase, we're proposing one hundred dollars per semester or two hundred per annually to forty-eight hundred. It's about a three, a four point three-five percent increase. That does fall within the range of other community colleges. It ranges anywhere from two percent, and the highest we have seen is five percent, and that is locally here as well. I believe Rockland might be one that's five percent. Orange is two. We have the list, and it falls within that range. Most of the community colleges are. I haven't heard of one that is holding flat yet. So we are still maintaining that. Part-time tuition just kind of translates from the the full-time. And then the Pell Grants, Pell Award, Max Award is seventy-three ninety-five, and then for the TAP is forty-eight hundred. And then here's a comparison of tuition increases across. SUNY average is fifty-two ninety-one. These are the proposed twenty-three, twenty-four numbers, so these are updated. And as you can see, at forty-eight hundred, we are still the lowest in the state for community colleges as far as tuition goes. So, you know, we're not, we still have something to brag about, lowest tuition. Hopefully, it's an attraction for, you know, students to come here. For enrollment projections, we're predicting, based on fall of last year's enrollment, three point three five percent full-time enrollment decline and a five point five one percent part-time enrollment decline. And you'll see in your packet, the projected enrollment decline is four point eight. It just takes an average of all those numbers for for that. And then it's fiscal impact is roughly a million dollars based on that enrollment decline projection. Some non-tuition revenue assumptions. One is the charge-back revenue. That is going to increase, and this is a result of our revenue stream decreasing and our expenses increasing. The formula is such that whenever those two items kind of go in the opposite direction, that charge-back rate goes up. So that's why you see a fairly significant increase in charge-back revenue. Non-resident tuition is up. Again, this is seems to be driven by students who have not completed paperwork, and that's the residency paperwork required. If they do not submit that paperwork, then they are charged non-resident tuition. Technology fee is down, it's just due to lower enrollment, and then credit-free revenue is expected to be flat.
Adam, before you go on, I just want to point out that the college maintains consistent contact with the students who have filled out the paperwork. They keep asking them to. It will save them money, but it doesn't get done sometimes.
Right. Yep. So here's a summary of proposed revenues. You can see tuition down roughly three hundred and some odd thousand. Out-of-state non-resident tuition, expected to increase slightly. There you can see the the large change in the charge-back revenue from three point one million, three point two million to about four point eight million. The college and high school, even though it's the we budgeted revenue stream of five hundred thousand, we did not start charging that for that current year, but we are going to be start doing that in the next fiscal year, roughly eight hundred and fifty thousand. And that takes into account, one, a slight decrease in the number of credit hours realized from concurrent enrollment because we're not sure how that's going to impact enrollment and that. And it also accounts for a thirty percent reduction in the free and reduced lunch eligible students. Sponsor contribution, that's the increase there. It's roughly six hundred and seventy-one thousand. State aid, now I did say it remains flat, and this is a little increase, but that's because state aid rental reimbursements is included in that. And we did get forty, about forty-two thousand dollar increase in rental reimbursement aid from the state. And then the other revenue, that's the this course fees and other and non-credit income, and it also includes the HIRF revenue. Well, the last year, well, this current fiscal year, the four point nine, included HIRF revenue of about nine hundred thousand, and that's not included in the next year. So that's why there's also a decrease in that number. This is just kind of a nice picture of the distribution of the revenue streams, and you can see tuition, state aid, sponsor contribution, all fairly equal, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent respectively. Out-of-state college and high school represents about represents about one percent, charge-back eight percent, and then all those other fees is about six percent. Proposed expenses. So for the proposed budget, personnel side, going from thirty-four point four to thirty-nine million. That is a big increase. Get to that in a second. Benefits going up again, also roughly five hundred thousand. Equipment remaining flat, and then contractual obligations increasing a little bit just due to contractual obligations. We'll get to that in a second. Here we are. So salaries, the thirteen point six-two percent increase. So there's two factors included in this. One is this current fiscal year, there was no raises or step increases or promotions budgeted into this fiscal year because we were in contract negotiations at this time last year. So there was no increases in there. So we had to do a catch-up payment for steps and for raises. And then also add in next year's increases as well. So this is counting both of those years. So it does, from a numbers side of things, it looks really big. It is, but it does count two years' worth of those increases. Benefits increasing three point seven four percent over prior year. There was a seven percent increase in the DEHIC rate. That's our health insurance consortium. But there is an anticipated savings based on the change in contribution rates from employees. And then we're assuming an eight percent increase from accounting health insurance. We haven't gotten those exact figures yet, but just based on history. And then contractual obligations, almost a six percent increase over prior year or this current year. And again, this is based on utilities primarily. I think this current year, we're looking at a nine percent increase over last year's in expenses for utilities, and then next year, we're predicting a ten percent increase. And then these include all of our IT contracts, facilities contracts. They all have multi-year contracts, and they have built-in escalations in them, and that kind of accounts for that. And again, just following up on some of the things that are affecting the salary lines, due contract, which was ratified last year, four percent increase annually, and then CSCA, which is the county portion. We have employees here for them. It's three point five percent increase. Again, there's the catch-ups. So one point seven five million was catch-up, and then one point five four million was the current, to get us current from that. And then faculty and administrative promotions, roughly two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then some other minor adjustments here and there based on management confidential, part-time, student employment. Some of those numbers also went up. Salary detail, just kind of break it up. This is based on how the SUNY system captures categories within personnel. So you have your instructional staff, administrative, support staff, and student employees. You can see kind of how each of those groups, the salaries have increased from year to year. And then this is kind of our proposed budget salary, budget summary. Revenue is expected to be about sixty million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-four, with expenses sixty-five million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-four. That is a deficit of four million, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. That would be supported by the current fund balance. Our fund balance is healthy at this point. We have almost eighteen million dollars. It's about thirty percent of our operating budget. SUNY recommends, and the board has approved, recommended fifteen percent of our budget or our fund balance to be against the budget. So we're looking at roughly a nine million dollar target for our fund balance. So with utilizing almost five million dollars to balance our budget, some other items in there that are capturing some expenses, unrealized expenses. The two hundred and fifty thousand the board approved back in March, I believe it was, for computer purchases. Once we factor in all those items into the the fund balance, we're looking at a fund balance of roughly two and a half, twelve and a half to thirteen million at the end of this fiscal year. So we still will be a healthy fund balance, roughly twenty percent. But in my shoes, we have some work to do because a five million dollar budget deficit is not something that we can sustain. And so we got to look at expenses, see where we can streamline some things, looking at all of our contracts to see where we can possibly realign them or rework some some negotiations with them and get reduced costs. And then the other part of this is vacancies. We have vacancies every year. It's a given. Average is about one and a half million dollars a year, which also is factored into adding to the fund balance, so to speak. But that's the other really opportunistic time for us to realign or looking at these positions. How can we realign funds that to better meet the needs of the priorities of the college? And really utilizing those positions to help us reshape the direction we're going in. Just not just from a fiscal standpoint, but from a strategic standpoint as well as we look at programming and and need to just the overall operations of the college. Any questions?
So in terms of fund balance, we don't have it projected in there. So we're not, you're only looking at, excuse me, in terms of the vacancy factor. So vacancy factor, we're not projecting? That's only going to go into fund balance?
Well, I can explain this.
A little less than a negative impact.
Absolutely. But I would prefer if we add more, this is what our number needs to be for the year. I mean, that's what was happening. I mean, it was, you know that you have to account for this much in vacancy.
That's tricky because we don't know how many vacancies we're going to have every fiscal year.
Some positions need to be held open longer than.
Yeah, I mean, that's one way of going about it. And again, that's that's part of the strategy. How do we address the vacancies that do come up and ensuring that we're making the right decisions moving forward? Now, one of the things in the Evergreen report was that our benchmarking to other institutions, our open positions were open almost twice as long as the benchmark was, one hundred and thirty days versus sixty days. So that's something we also get to try and work into that. It's, okay, yes, we have vacant positions. Some of them are are critical. CIO position as an example. That's been vacant for a while. That's a critical position. Yes, that's been giving us salary savings every year. It's been vacant. But from a a strategy and an operational standpoint, it does hurt. But I agree, if we could predict better what that vacancy number would be every year, we'd be better predict our our fund balance. I I think from my standpoint, you know, the assumption is we're running full steam ahead, and we have every position filled, and we're we're making a difference. But reality is, we don't know who's going to be leaving or when they're going to be leaving outside of retirements.
I think a bigger concern I have for this budget is, and you addressed it at the end of your presentation, is we're using so much of fund balance. And I don't see where we've cut expenditures. We have a decreasing student population, yet rising expenses. This is not sustainable long term.
I don't disagree. Yeah. So one of the things that I've looked at and kind of, you know, I want to say new in the position.
You are.
Nine months, you know. So one of the things I've looked at is the trends in full-time equivalent positions, FTEs. Over the course of five years, our total FTEs, and this is all available on IPeds, have decreased twenty percent. Faculty have decreased fourteen percent, and part-time FTEs have decreased seventy percent. So there has been a decrease in the the FTEs to kind of go along with that trend. So that was one thing I was saying, all right, what's what's that history? How does that compare to the decline in enrollment? So there has been a decline in FTEs as well. It just doesn't keep up with the revenue streams, the the lack of revenue streams from that decrease in enrollment. So but I I fully agree. This is not sustainable. And that's why, you know, I think, one, looking at all these vacant positions, looking at all our contractual obligations, and really getting into the nitty-gritty of all that, and how can we save money? When you when you look at the overall budget, eighty-five percent of our budget's personnel and benefits. And most of those are covered under contract. That's tough to negotiate with. When you look at the rest of that fifteen percent, there's a lot of obligations that we have in there, such as utilities. We just can't cut utilities. We can certainly make try to figure out ways to be more sustainable from an energy efficiency. That's going to require capital investment. And then we have all of our other service contracts. Most of them are IT. But we have some other ones that help, you know, enrollment services, others that help instruction and learning. And that's where we really have to to kind of look at all those as well and see what is being useful, what's not. But when you you pull back all those layers, you're looking at maybe seven, eight percent that we can actually cut. And to make up a five million dollar difference, it's hard, so.
And if I could just respond to that, I'm sorry. You know, this was a long conversation that we had during finance, for sure, articulating exactly what you've said, Angela. And so I think, you know, we gave Adam this year, we understood where we were, but we really were kind of holding his feet to the fire for, you know, future, right, based on being here new, but, you know, really exploring deeply into those expenses, right, and the contractual things that we currently have. And then obviously, to continue to look at ways in which we can grow revenue, right, to offset that. Because some of, you know, what you've said, Adam, is absolutely spot on. There's just some things we can't control from an expense standpoint. So if that's the case, then the only other option is for us to look at how do we grow our revenue, right? And we know fully well that enrollment happens to be one And we know fully well that enrollment happens to be one of those, for sure. And we've, I think we've turned the corner, you know, I'm cautiously optimistic that it's not, you know, plummeting like it was at one point, right? But we're in different times. So all to say, Angela, that, you know, we're looking at this very, very closely. And I thank my colleagues, Steve and Linda, Steve in particular, who's our finance guru, who makes sure that we're, you know, holding ourselves accountable here. But thank you, Adam, for your thoughtfulness. Yes. Steven, I don't know if I left something out.
No, I was just going to say, I obviously was concerned with a $4 to $5 million negative position initially, but we had lengthy discussions and, as you said, many of these expenses are committed. But through the discussions, you know, I got comfortable that, you know, with open positions potentially benefiting us a million or so, with the commitment to look at those openings and decide, you know, when and how quickly to fill some of these and to, you know, look at for the future, so there's some opportunities there, the commitment to look at many of the contracted services that we're committed to. I guess, long story short, I got enough things that the administration is focused on and committed to doing to try to close this gap. And I think some of the initial enrollment or applications, I should say, not enrollment, the application numbers look positive for the coming semester. So that, you know, there's a lot of things that I could get comfortable with to, you know, move this budget forward as it is.
If I can follow up on that real quick, sorry, Linda, I just, you know, we're predicting a 4.8% decrease in enrollment. You know, Scott would, you know, his numbers, you know, why the heck are you predicting 4.8? I want to err on the side of caution because those are trends from point in time to point in time. And I would much rather budget for a decrease in enrollment and realize an increase to balance that out in the long term. And this also doesn't, you know, I don't, I haven't talked about, I'm not going to because it's not my realm, the increase in revenue and other streams, which is new programming, you know, the agreements that we have in place or working on with other individuals and that, you know, Dr. Jordan can speak to those. Those are other things that are going to help balance out the budget, not just looking at expenses. It's a two, three-pronged approach.
Right.
And I, one of the things we discussed on the finance committee too, was that we're doing a catch-up for the contract. So that's a pretty significant number that we're catching up. I think about, what did you say, like 1.5 million?
Yeah, when you factor in benefits and stuff, it's close to two.
Yeah, I have $2 million plus benefits.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good point, Linda, yeah.
It is also, I just want to point out, this is working, that is in the letter, that's a response to the legislature, we don't budget for additional state monies. This is the base we get, that we are guaranteed to get, so we budget for that. But all the others are competitive grants. And typically, we get anywhere from two to four million a year extra, which is why, I know it's a big ding to the fund balance, but our fund balance is basically too high. I mean, legislators were telling us, your fund balance is too high, which it is. So we deliberately kind of grew it because we knew we were going to have the employment contract done sooner or later, which we did, and so that was part of it. But also, you know, we got more state, we got more federal aid than what we thought initially that year with Underherf, and we got more state aid than what we thought. So those are things you can't budget for because they're competitive. So what looks like we're sort of being mismanagers isn't really true because I don't think it's going to wind up using that much of the fund balance. It hasn't been true since I've been here for all these years. So that's sort of my philosophy on that one, too.
This accounts for the additional 4% from the county, and of course, we're going to talk about the letter, but suppose they decide they want to just do flat? Suppose that's their decision, what do we do then?
We come back.
Yeah, we come back. Just to kind of give you an idea, that would put us at a budget deficit of about 5.56 million.
Yeah.
If they didn't give us the 4%.
Right.
That's the only thing that changes in the whole presentation is just the revenue stream from the county, it doesn't change anything else.
I will say, the comments from the finance committee made me a little bit more comfortable with this. I mean, this goes, voting for a budget deficit like this goes against everything I've ever been for. So, you know, I do appreciate the comments specifically about knowing that it's curbing expenses and that that kind of leads me into the discussion on the letter, whether or not there should be some additional commentary in there that, about exactly that, that there will be a plan or we're formulating a plan to look at expenses. That isn't really addressed in that letter.
I thought we tried to do that in talking about those bullets, enrollment contracts, personnel, increasing tuition and so on and so forth.
Are we being too bleak?
Yeah. So I'd like to get your feedback, which is why we waited before sending this off, to make sure that the entire board had the opportunity to input.
Yeah, I'm putting the lens on of a legislator. And if I'm looking at that letter, I want to know that there's a concerted plan from the board, the board is aware, we've got to look at expenses, the finance department knows, the leadership knows, that we are looking heavily at whatever those capital costs are, infrastructure costs are, whatever it is that's on the table.
You know, I just assume people know that, but you're right. You can never not say the things possible and underscore it every time.
You're right.
That's just the commentary that I keep hearing, that's why I mentioned.
Well, I think it's important, Frank, but I think what I also read in, you know, was making sure that we gave clarity about the state and what we get from the state, right, and their perception of some of the additional that really doesn't come to fruition, right? So I think it is a balance, I think you're, you know, certainly well-postered in what you're sharing with us. We don't, we want to be clear and as transparent as possible. But I think what I, you know, recognized even more than that in some of the language that came with their comeback was them not understanding completely how we work with the state.
It sounds like with careful management, this gap can close fairly easily with careful management.
So I'd be interested in anything that any board member has to share about how we can make that point more pointed.
If you could, if you would like to have a couple sentences to add in through there that you think might help, that would be great. Anybody else on the response for the board or the budget, I'm sorry? We seem to have blurred these two, sorry. It's all right?
Well, there's the other discussion about enrollment, that we need to put all of that together as well, so.
Scott, looks like it's time for the enrollment update.
Thank you, Adam.
Yes, thank you, Adam.
Joy is handing out the enrollment numbers as of this morning.
Woo-hoo!
We've got 1,346 students enrolled for fall for just under 1,600 credits. That's 171 more students, about 15% up from where we were at this point last year, just under 2,400 credits, which is just under 18% up from where we were last year. It's still early, probably 30% of enrollment's in, but that's a much better place to be in than down. We have increased the gap over last year, every week for the last six weeks, typically between 300 and 400 credits a week, we've been doing more. There are currently 332 new students registered and over 230 students with appointments to be registered. Last year at this time, we had 188, so that means we have 144 more new students than we did at this time last year. Returning student enrollment's also up by about 30 students right now. Given that we had 300 fewer students in the spring, in the prior spring, that's a really big number, that's an increase that wouldn't be expected. Most of the increase is in full-time enrollment, that's up 22% as of right now, part-time enrollment's up 3%. And as Steve was mentioning, in terms of applications, we're up about 20%, nearly 3,200 now, which is over 500 more than we had last year at this time. I mean, we had a big surge early, SUNY did some free application weeks, but we've maintained and grown the number that we've increased over last year and continued, we've continued being about 20% up, which means every week, we're 20% up than the prior year. So we're continuing to add to that application pool. So it's hopeful, it's early, but it's hopeful. I mean, I look at what happened last year and through mid-July, and I'm pretty confident we're going to be looking good through mid-July. It's when we get to August, last year was crazy because we had a lot of people waiting to the end. So it's going to be a matter of whether, how much this increase is, just a matter of us being more efficient, getting students through more easily, or whether it's a true increase in enrollment. I think it's some of both. And I would, part of why we're getting people through more early, so it's not as crazy at the end, but I'd like it to be crazy at the end anyway, even though we're doing it now early. Okay, so a couple other things happening, that's grades for the spring are in and Kaina, our residence hall director, took a look at how the residence hall students did. Last year, after the spring grades ran, only 55% of the students in the residence hall were eligible to return because of the poor grades. This year, that number's almost 70%. They've done a lot of work engaging the students on campus, bringing people to the residence hall, so there's been a great improvement in that. There are already 100-plus students committed to be in the residence hall for next year. We didn't reach that number until a month from now last year. So that's another positive as well.
Scott, what's the GPA though, to return?
2.0.
2.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
I mean, let's be honest.
It's not, it's not huge, but it's, yeah, it's.
It's a very low GPA.
Yes. Okay, so I just want to mention a few of the things we're going to continue doing in addition to the marketing we've been doing so far. We have a pilot program, we're reaching out to 160 students who were registered this spring but are not yet registered for the fall. This is only students who have a 3.25 GPA or above or have, and have 40 or more credits. We're going to send them a checklist and let them register themselves. It will create more space in the advising center so we can have more new student appointments and appointments with other students. So we're going to see how that works. There are potential downsides because students, if they're registering themselves, might take something that's not applicable to financial aids, we've got to be careful, but we want to try it with a select group and see how it goes. And the ACT coaches will monitor their students to make sure that they're doing the right thing. We're also going to do email and phone, reach out to hundreds of students who stopped out over the past five years, they have 50-plus credits at DCC, they don't have a degree, they haven't gone anywhere else, and we're going to try to get them to come back and they should have a fairly short path to a degree. We're working with Diana and the foundation, where up to 50 alumni can take a free class at the college. The idea is not just to get the free class, alumni, the way it's defined, some of them are these students with 45, 50 credits at the college. We might try to get them back that way and try to complete as well. Finally, next week, the chancellor will be sending every high school senior in the county and Putnam County to letter offering them admission to DCC. Now, most kids are going to throw the letter out and aren't going to care about it, they already know where they're going, and that includes kids that are going to DCC. And we had to do some damage control and talk with the high school counselors, send letters to the students saying, expect this letter, because they could get very confused, saying, why am I getting this letter when I'm already going to enroll at DCC? But there are students who may not have saw themselves as worthy of going to college and may get this letter and apply. Research has shown that that does happen, so we'll see how this letter goes. It probably would have been better going back in September, but they're going to try it now and we'll see what happens. SUNY's also doing some social media marketing over the summer. Typically, that doesn't result in much, but I think it's, they asked us for some input this time around, so maybe can do a little bit better this time around as well. And I just want to put some things in context in terms of Adam's presentation. So if we are able to hold the position we're at today, that would probably close roughly $1 million of that gap. So between that and the open positions, we're close to halfway through that gap. So, any other questions?
Not so much a question, more of a comment. I am a born optimist, but I will tell you that in past meetings, when we've talked about this particular topic, I didn't feel as optimistic, I can assure you, right? So although cautiously optimistic, I just want to say thank you, really, to everyone who's put so much energy into the importance of our enrollment, not only just from a revenue standpoint, but the amount of students that are falling by the wayside and not getting the education to be that, you know, next wave of a workforce. So I think it's twofold, although we, you know, very much want the monies coming in, Adam, so thank you for your commitment as well. But this is very promising. I can tell you, especially to some of our newer board members, there were times we sat here and enrollment really kind of sucked absolutely the energy right out of you, hearing the numbers. It was so dismal, it really was. So this is really, a really welcomed report, and I thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
I just want to comment as well that this is proving that our retention rates are going to keep growing because we have a lot of students coming back, returning head count, except for part-time, which barely decreased has increased. That's great because that's been one of our goals all along in terms of managing enrollment as well as making sure we pay attention to retention. And Scott, just so everybody knows, full confession, as I've been, you know, rah-rah-ing each time in Peter's office when we get, every time in there, once a Wednesday, I get a report and they look better, and Scott goes, calm down. This is early, we may just be more efficient, calm down, was what he did earlier to you guys. So I am taking that with a grain of salt, like Sheila said, I am optimistic. I feel as though, there's also, out just in the world, the economy is finally adjusting to COVID and we're getting back and maybe, it's not going to go back to pre-COVID ways, I get that, but we're accommodating, we're adjusting, and now we're reaching a new normal, maybe, in other words. And I feel as though we're poised, with all the innovations that Peter's brought, all the work and energy that the staff and faculty have expended, I feel like we're poised to take advantage of that. So these numbers support that to me and I, I'm mostly eternal optimist, so go, go DCC! Anyway.
Yeah, I mean, so if something more solid, the SUNY four years, deposits are up 6%. Now, that could be a good sign, or they could be taking students from us, so we'll see what that is too. But I think it's a good sign because I think the application numbers give us many more opportunities to bring folks in.
And I think, you know, Michael, what you've said, and it's something that I, you know, said in the past, that what lacked here in DCC, and I don't know all the innards and nor should we, right, as a board, we're not. We are a governing body, we should not know the day-to-day, that is left to you and your staff. But it all comes down to a culture in an institution or an organization. And so what I have actually seen is a sea change in a culture that exists, and that's because of all of you and those that aren't sitting here, right? So the reason why that we're getting more and more of these positives is because of the commitment and more importantly, the culture that has changed in my observation here at the college. So thank you for that.
Agreed. Anyone else? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
The last item on the agenda are the liaison's reports. Frank, do you have anything new from the foundation? I'm guessing you do.
Certainly do. The foundation held its honors convocation on May 17th, awarding nearly $170,000 to 168 students, congratulations. Awards ranged from $500 to $4,000. Some donors came from as far away as Maine and Washington DC. The new format was a huge success. The engineering faculty held their foundation-sponsored annual engineering alumni event on May 17th, and as a result, an alum from the 1960 graduating class is interested in supporting the foundation financially, another congratulations. Yesterday, the foundation held its 33rd golf outing with great weather, 91 golfers and additional guests for dinner. And I'm told there's some sore folks here at the dais. The foundation, with assistance from the grants office and marketing and communications, is applying for a $1 million unrestricted grant from Mackenzie Scott, which is due June 12th. Hopefully, that can help close the gap over here. Tomorrow, Foundation Assistant Director Brunel Roser will be graduating from the Chamber Foundation's Executive Leadership Program. Again, this year, Foundation Executive Director Diana Pollard has been asked to serve on the Community College Conference for the Council for Advancement and Support of Education and has been asked to serve as vice chair next year and chair the following year. Have you accepted? The foundation is working on a strategic plan with the expectation of providing a final plan to the foundation board. And at the September board meeting, this process is being led by Lisa Morris of the Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union, and the foundation board meeting is this upcoming Thursday.
Any questions or comments?
Congratulations, Diana.
That was a great comment right there. DCC Association, we don't have necessarily a new report because we'll be meeting shortly. Since our last report, we added asylum seekers on this. Peter?
So, we had a conversation with members of the Board of Directors for the College Association because many of you may have read about the hoax that was perpetrated. Association, because many of you may have read about the hoax that was perpetrated on the community regarding veterans being displaced by asylum seekers. We met with the Association's Board to talk about and get input and guidance about how they were feeling about DCC's Residence Hall taking in not asylum seekers, but veterans who may be displaced and who we could put into a short-term, let's say, program, transitional program, that helped those individuals move into civilian life and work. The Board was all for that, and then we found out that this whole thing was a hoax. So we continue to be interested in doing something of that sort. But the fact of the matter is that we could not see a way to accommodate asylum seekers, because, one, it would be in violation of the bond covenant for that facility, and, two, how do we house them and then move them out and get ourselves ready for the fall? It could be pretty disruptive. So the Board of the Association decided and agreed that we could not entertain asylum seekers. We may hear from the governor more about this, because if you heard the news today, she is pushing for SUNY colleges to accommodate. I think we are in a different situation in that we're not a state-operated campus. The state doesn't fund our housing or Residence Hall. It is funded by a 501(c)(3), that is, the College Association. So that Board of Directors has entire control and say, plus, again, the bond covenant.
The bond covenant means that there has to be an educational use inside it. There's only a limited amount of noneducational rooms we could rent. That's based on IRS rulings as well as how much income you can have that would be outside your main purpose. So, anybody have any questions? This is a Zoom meeting. I couldn't make it, and, Darren, were you there?
No, I couldn't.
That's what I thought. We were both absent, so that's why I asked Peter to kind of fill in. But he, they, I will add here that we got extensive notes on, from Christina, the Foundation Secretary, so it was as though we were there. We read everything, but I wanted to have someone that reported, who actually was, if not in the flesh, at least on the Zoom camera. So, but yes, if anything does happen, there, if we do have somehow displaced veterans at some point, the important thing that I took away was that everyone was sort of happy with the idea of not just having veterans in for a while, but also using it to help the veterans educationally.
Yeah.
Because we already have these programs, so we could expand them to potentially a new audience that would help everybody. So we'll follow. If there are no other questions, then would anyone like, would you like a five-minute break before we go into the main meeting? Yes?
I'm good.
Yes?
No.
Five-minute break? Sure.
Yeah.
We'll break for five minutes and come back at 7:25. Thank you all.
The budget is with Doug Caswell. The. He needs to circle back. Okay, I'll be happy to. Can we call the meeting to order at 7:25? Ms. Patacella, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Sheila Appel.
Present.
Mr. Frank Casella.
Present.
Mr. Stephen Caswell.
Present.
Ms. Derek Cloud.
Present.
Mr. Michael Dupree.
Present.
Ms. Angela Pleasant.
Present.
Ms. Linda, Lisa Gardi. Mr. Yvonne Guzman. Ms. Linda Frat.
Present.
Or am present.
I love that we all decided to stay present tonight because someone started us off that way. Thank you. Megan, a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So I'll second Sheila.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a time for public comment on board, I mean agenda items only. No one signed up tonight, so we can move on to the next item, which is consideration of the minutes for the meeting held on April 25th, 2023. Has anyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Motion to adjourn.
Angela's made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
With one abstention because I was absent. The next item on the agenda is committee reports. As a reminder, all items discussed under committee reports have been discussed in the actual committee meetings that have occurred prior to this. And as someone who's ex officio for all the committees, I just want to say thank you whenever I get to drop in to all those who participate. It's a lively discussion and I really enjoy it. It's just great watching everybody. The first would be academic and student affairs. Ms. Gardi is not here tonight, so I'm not sure who's going to step in. Thank you, trustee Cloud.
We discussed creating a resolution to include Juneteenth as a federal holiday for the college with much positive feeling. We had a state of the college presentation to the Budget, Finance, and Personnel Committee of the Legislature, and President Jordan spoke to the committee about the presentation, which he, members of the DCC leadership team, and Chairman Dupree provided a state of the college overview. Updates included enrollment, DCC's new website development enhancement of transfer pathways, investments in people, programs, and physical assets, the college's strategic plan, and re-accreditations. We have a discussion of the PSO matters. President Jordan and members of the leadership team spoke to the committee about three potential policy matters related to shared governance, recognition of the professional service alliance, a newly formed shared governance body within the college, and how it supports the college's DEI efforts. And I just want to say that that was something that when we did middle states, they really commented on. Standardization of college email signatures, part of the college's branding, and reducing the minimum age of students admitted to Duchess Community College to facilitate greater access to post-secondary education for younger, homeschooled, concurrent enrollment, and bridge, as well as P-Tech students. We got an update on the middle states. The formal site evaluation report was received by DCC, and a single correction was made and submitted to Middle States Commission on Higher Education. The report, along with our application for re-accreditation, will now be reviewed by the full commission when it meets in June. We talked about the strategic plan, and President Jordan let the committee know that cabinet members have started their work on unit targets and actions. And the final document will be brought to the board in July. And President Jordan reminded us about the date, time, and location for the honors, convocation, and graduation. He also provided an update on the commencement speaker, Professor Jacqueline Goff McNish, and the name of the student who would be awarded a posthumous degree, Melanie Cheyenne. I got to go to the convocation, and it was fabulous.
Any questions of trustee Cloud? Thank you for that summary. And you have a resolution, I believe, to introduce?
This is resolution number 2023-27. I offer the following resolution and move for its adoption. Be it resolved that based upon the recommendation of the president of the college, the attached amendment to the five-year academic calendar for 2022, '23 through 2025, '26, to include Juneteenth as a federal holiday, which shall be made part of the official minutes of this meeting, is hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Linda. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, trustee Cloud. Next item on the agenda is board policy. Chair Guzman is not here tonight, so trustee Caswell will present instead.
All right, thank you. We're going to have two resolutions tonight, so in our policy committee meeting, we had a good discussion on those two resolutions. One is a reaffirmation, and the other will be presented with revisions. And in the policy committee, we also had the opportunity to review the professional service organization matters. We had a brief overview of the budget for our benefit, and we also talked about the commencement exercises, so we covered those materials, those topics as well. With that, I'll jump into the resolutions. The first one is resolution number 2023-28. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas in keeping with good governance practices, the Board of Trustees Policy Committee reviews board and college administrative policies on a regular basis. And whereas based on this review, the policy committee has determined that the equal employment policy should be reaffirmed and remain in effect, now therefore be resolved that based upon the recommendations of the policy committee, the aforementioned equal employment policy is hereby reaffirmed and is to remain in effect, and be further resolved that the board reconsider this policy again within five years or earlier, should it be determined revisions are needed prior to the scheduled review date.
Is there a second?
Second, Sheila.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries.
All right, so our second resolution from the policy committee. I offer, well, resolution number 2023-29. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas in keeping with good governance practices, the Board of Trustees Policy Committee reviews board and college administrative policies on a regular basis. And whereas based upon this review and input from members of the Board of Trustees, the policy committee has determined that the policies, that the policy on mandated training needs to be revised. Now therefore be it resolved that based upon the recommendations of the policy committee and review by the Board of Trustees, the revised policy on mandated training, which is attached and shall be made part of the official minutes of this meeting, is hereby approved, and be it further resolved that this policy shall be effective immediately, and be it further resolved also that the board reconsider this policy again within five years or earlier, should it be determined revisions are needed prior to the scheduled review date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Angela. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? That motion carries too. Thank you, trustee Caswell.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Finance and Facilities Committee. Chair Appel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Much of what Dara and Steve said was also discussed in ours, and hopefully you were all paying attention because much of the workshop this evening was on topics that we discussed in committee. So thank you again to all those that presented our financials. Probably the only thing different was that President Jordan spoke to our committee in regards to our next 10, the academic and facilities master plan, and we will have a final report and presentation will be brought to the board in July. So I think that that's probably the most noteworthy here. I have three resolutions for tonight. First being approval of the audit for fiscal year. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas the Duchess Community College Board of Trustees has a responsibility to conduct business according to prudent, professional, and accepted practices. And whereas the financial statements of Duchess Community College for the fiscal year ending August 31, 2022, were reviewed by the outside auditing firm of Bonadeo and Company. Whereas in the opinion of the independent auditors, the financial statements of the college conform with generally accepted accounting practices in all respects. And whereas the Board of Finance and Facilities Committee has reviewed the audit and recommends that the Board of Trustees accept the audit for fiscal year 2021, 2022. And whereas the members of the Board of Trustees have received copies of the audit for review now, therefore it be resolved that based upon the recommendation of the Finance and Facilities Committee, the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the independent auditor's report for the fiscal year 2021, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to resolution 2023-31. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas a tuition and fee schedule and refund policy are prepared each year following the guidelines of the State University of New York. And whereas the Board of Trustees reviews the tuition and fee schedule and the refund policy as part of the annual budget process. Whereas it is necessary for the Board of Trustees to approve these fees each year, now therefore be it resolved, that the tuition and fee schedule and the refund policy for fiscal year 2023, 2024, which are attached and shall be made part of the official minutes of this meeting, are hereby approved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last resolution, 2023-32, offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas the annual operating budget request of Duchess Community College for the period of September 1, 2023, through August 31 of 2024, has been developed in accordance with guidelines furnished by the State University of New York. And whereas the requirements for operating expenditures have been determined to be $65,443,844, now therefore it be resolved that the operating budget for Duchess Community College for the fiscal year September 1, 2023, through August 31, 2024, in the amount of $65,443,844, with anticipated funding from the County of Duchess by appropriation from fiscal year 2024 of $17,449,414, is hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Linda. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Board. I do want to point out that if the county legislature does not want to increase, they vote against increasing their contribution, I believe the Board will need to have a special meeting perhaps to come back because we'll have to amend the budget. This would do nothing but increase that difference, would go to fund balance decrease further. Otherwise, everything would stay the same in the budget, so just be aware that we may have to have a special meeting during that time. So thank you all. Next item on the agenda is my report of the chairperson. Oh, sorry. Personnel community relations. I was only thinking you left. It's personnel community relations, Chair Flesland.
Okay. Personnel met and discussed all of the things that you have heard about already, and we also discussed personnel matters. We have one resolution to come before you tonight, resolution 2023-33. I offer the following and move its adoption. Whereas in accordance with Article IX, the agreement between Duchess County and the Civil Service Employees Association and the Duchess, and the president of Duchess Community College, preferred charges of misconduct against employee 9387 dated July 19, 2022. The Board of Trustees appointed the hearing officer, Ira Lobel, to render an advisory opinion after conducting a disciplinary hearing of the charges. And by letter dated September 15, 2022, the employee was notified that a disciplinary hearing pursuant to Section 75 of the Civil Service Law would be held on October 4, 2022. The employee requested and was granted two adjournments of the disciplinary hearing, and the disciplinary hearing was held on November 29, 2022, at which time the hearing officer heard testimony and received other evidence from the charging party and from the employee. The charging party and the employees submitted legal briefs to the hearing officer in support of their respective positions. And the burden of proving misconduct is on the charging party. And the Board has reviewed the record in this matter, including transcripts of the hearing, the exhibits introduced into evidence at the hearing, the respective legal briefs submitted by the charging party and the employee, and the report and recommendations of the hearing officer. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board hereby adopts the findings and recommendations in the report and recommendations of the hearing officer, including the determination that the employee is guilty of the charges of misconduct and specifications two, three, four, and five, and determines that the hearing officer's recommendation of the finding of guilt was based upon the substantial evidence in the record. And the Board concludes that the penalty of dismissal from service effective immediately is the appropriate sanction, and adopts the hearing officer's penalty recommendation for the reasons set forth within his report and recommendations. And be it further resolved that the Board hereby directs the president of Duchess Community College or his designated to take whatever steps are necessary to inform the employee of this determination, and to file the necessary documents within the Duchess County Department of Civil Service. Is there a second?
Second, Sheila.
Any further discussion on this item? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays or abstentions? Thank you, Chair Flesland. I know that was a long one to read, and that wasn't an easy one to vote on, but we had the recommendation from the hearing officer. And Angela has to leave to run home for a personal matter, so thank you.
Actually, my dog just like tore apart.
Yes.
I need some.
Not a fun personal matter necessarily.
I can see the visual.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the chair's report. And even though Angela's leaving, the first thing I want to do is say thank you to Vice Chair Flesland, as well as to the colleagues seated to my left and right. I went through some health issues recently, so I was unable to participate not only in the last board meeting, but also in most of the middle states. Questioning and meeting of all the trustees, and believe me, I was gnashing my teeth at home with a high fever. I feel like somebody who studied and studied then didn't get the test. But thanks to all of you and your comments and your impressive responses. As you know, middle states gave us really high marks as the, one of the few people who was here during the last report, which was sort of humiliating because there were 12 standards and we missed on four. We didn't get many commendations. This time, we got commendations on almost every item. We were not found lacking on anything. The final report's not here yet, as has been noted. But I walked away not just with a song in my heart, as they say, but also a few tears in my eyes that were shed because, again, it means that everything that everybody in this institution is doing now, that we're all trying to, I believe, march arm in arm toward a better future, is working. And that's evidenced by the fact that it was the last minute call when I said I can't make it because I kept thinking my fever would go down, and Angela went and just did it, and everybody else did as well. So congratulations and thanks to everybody sitting up here. I also just want to point out, I believe we've discussed it informally and also through emails, but I'm not sure that the greater college community is aware, but at the last minute, a senior member, Dee Dee Barrett, was able to get a SUNY aid to localities, $150,000 grant again, which will, this is going to help housing insecure students, both provide food and board, room and board, I should say. Also, I got to attend the DCC Foundation Golf Tournament yesterday, and believe it or not, it was really fun. Our brave president was somehow pressured by Diana Pollard to actually play 18 full holes.
Don't eat crumbs, people.
Let's say she gently reminded, she gently reminded him that he would need to do that.
I don't think I'll do that again.
I was a witness to see Peter going, coming in going, ah! So, but as a trooper, he, as a trooper.
The second day's worse.
I also would like to point out that I said it, I added it to my remarks as an impromptu, but a few years ago, we didn't have any women golfers. At one point years ago, we gave an award, just a special award because we had one foursome. There were women back again golfing yesterday, so I thought that was a great thing as well to see a foursome. I went to, I made sure that I introduced myself to them, and Baronee Sheep Medal, one of the Baronies was.
Three.
Yeah, three, sorry. I saw two of them. I met two of them, but it still was exciting to see that out of the 91, we finally had the distaff population represented higher. Convocation, which has been mentioned earlier, trustees Caswell and Cloud were present. The scholarship recipients, in case no one knows this, they try to seat them with the donors if possible. The important thing I took away from this, though, I heard it while standing with Diana and also while talking to Peter, so many of the scholarship recipients came up and said, can I meet my donor? I really need to explain to them how much this means to me. Your heart melts when you hear this. And we had to explain that if they could be seated, you would have been seated, and that some of the donors had passed away, their children don't live, you know, here anymore, et cetera. But there were a couple that came also from, I believe, Florida, who happened to be able to attend, and they provided us with the, I believe it was the course credits from the very first year that Duchess Community College was in operation.
Course catalog.
Course catalog, which, by the way, the courses were $10 a course back then, so we, hey, we'd kept up being the lowest one in the state. At any rate, it was a wonderful experience, and I want to thank the foundation. Believe it or not, we hadn't had them in so long, and the last one we had, I couldn't attend, so this was my first time to go. And it was just, I will also add, the student on my right, who's graduating, was graduating at 44. He attended DCC strictly online. He's been working for Con Edison and the City and commuting daily back and forth. That's a long commute. He still was able to graduate with honors and is doing, he was just a phenomenon. The young lady to my left will be returning next year. I was one of the ones who asked me if there was some way she could possibly meet the donors. The graduation that we held last Friday, as I reported in my speech that night, the ages ranged from a young of 17, graduating at 17, which is pretty phenomenal, because I keep thinking, I was still going, uh-huh, uh-huh, at 17, although I did graduate high school. The eldest was 67, which, that's a year older than me, and I think how hard it would be for me to go back right now to pay attention. We had 12, I think, ahead graduates, and once again, Dr. Jordan was, encouraged me to stand up to shake hands as well as him. And last year, I was felt a little more discombobulated. This year, no matter what, I told every student, we were proud of you to go out and knock them dead, whatever. And every student personally said, thank you, thank you, thank you. And then we said, they feel proud, we feel proud of you. Because of course, I also, my heart was bursting that day too. Our student speaker knocked it out of the ballpark that day. He was great. He talked about the adversities he'd gone through and what coming to DCC had meant to him. He had to lie fallow because of health issues for a while. He missed high school, basically. He had to lie fallow here for a while, but came back and graduated. It was a very inspiring day all along, and I will also point out that our president's comments were great, that Jackie McNish-Goff's speech was fantastic. She knew her poem. A bunch of us were up there, but she knew a poem that she'd been required to recite to her class when she was being punished in elementary school. And it was a very arousing one that actually meant something to students. And if you think that sometimes poetry doesn't relate, that one related loud and clear. So I want to thank to all our faculty and staff for sending over 860 graduates into the world, and that concludes my report. Next one on the agenda is reported to the president. Dr. Jordan.
Thank you, Chairman Dupree. I want to start by echoing Chairman Dupree's thanks and congratulations to the entire college community. All year long, this community worked diligently to make sure that we got to the point of commencement, which is a seminal kind of time here at DCC and at colleges across the country. But we didn't get here by coasting. It took a lot of hard work and diligence, and I want to take a moment to express my thanks on behalf of the entire college for all that you have done. I also want to mention that we rounded out the academic year with two town halls offered by the Office of the President, and thanks to members of our leadership team for joining me in that exercise. We had conversations about the budget, where Adam presented what you heard this evening. So in the interest of total transparency and making sure that we were inclusive, we did that part of the presentation. But we also talked about the strategic plan and what members of the college community can look forward to come fall. So I was pleased with the attendance at those town hall meetings and the kinds of questions and input that we got as well. Thanks to Sarah Lee of Think Duchess. We were invited to host and provide tours for Taiwanese semiconductor manufacturing leaders who visited Duchess County a couple weeks ago, and we gave them a tour of DCC at Fish Gill so that they could see plans for our Mechatronics Lab and so forth. And they were very interested in knowing if members of their community back in Taiwan could participate in training that happens or will happen at that facility. So we were really pleased, pleased about that. So that's the extent of my report. Thanks to the board again for another wonderful year here at DCC, and for all of your support and guidance of our leadership team. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Do any trustees have an item that they would like to add for future business, for future agendas?
No. I think everyone knows me, they're kind of like Pollyanna, but I'd like to just give a round of applause to the staff that is here, and a shout out to Joya, who actually makes sure that we are all prepared. Susan, you should feel very proud of the work for middle states, but everyone in this room and those that weren't, so let's just give them a round of applause. Our job is made easier, Mr. Chairman, by the fact that we have such an extraordinary team that is doing yeoman's work here at the institution. So thank you, Dr. Jordan, and to each and every one of you here in this room tonight. And please extend it to your staff as well.
Well said, Sheila, and that's great. Other business. As a reminder, the date of the next meeting is July 25. There are no June meetings planned, but remember, we may have emergency meetings, trustees, fellow trustees, so please make certain that we all pay attention to emails that come out. And if there are no other discussion items, then Megan, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.